Good morning. It is Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, and I'll call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand if you're able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If there are no changes, I'll take a motion to adopt today's agenda.
So moved.
Second. They're moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Now is the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you'd like to speak, please come forward. If you're in the meeting room or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. And seeing that, we will close public comment number one. We will move on to presentation from the City of Zering Urban Renewal Area Application. When you begin, just please introduce yourselves. So we have that.
I'm Martin Herr.
I'm Amy Wimeldorff.
And I brought her along. This is our new city clerk. She started a week ago. She's in and after one week with me, she did come back for a second. We'll hope that continues on. So she's worked for, and I brought her this morning, basically to introduce you two. That's Linda Merkin over there. This is Latifa Basil, and the chairperson is Lisa Haddon.
Very nice to meet you.
To meet you.
We're happy to have her onboard. She's doing a fine job so far. Still a lot to learn.
Indeed.
But then so do I. So for this application, it was for upgrading at our shelter house at our park. The concrete has, over the years, cracked, become uneven as it does, mostly outside the roof area of the shelter, but even inside. And our, our plan is to replace that concrete. And we had thought about even replacing what was under the roof, but we're going to look into now having one of those companies come in that level driveways. They put the level, because I think under the roof, we can possibly get that to work. Well, because it'd be very difficult, because the steel support beams that hold the roof up are bolted into that concrete in areas. So I really think if we could do that, it would, it would even it up, smooth it up. But then outside, we want to remove all the concrete outside the shelter house on the pad. Perhaps make the pad just a little bigger. We'll have to see what the bids come in at. And then there's a sidewalk that comes out of the shelter house on the east end and goes north up to the end, the gate entry to the north. And it's used a lot when there's things going on at the park. The nursing home is right across the street. And that sidewalk is not in the best of shape. So we would like to tear that out and put a new sidewalk in there, maybe a little wider than the one, so ADA compliant with everything, and put that sidewalk in. And then we want to redo the electrical in the shelter house. We want to add outlets, put in newer, better LED lighting on the inside of the shelter house and even some on the outside to make it better light, better lit up for night and so forth. And we need more outlets in today's world of crockpots and warmers and roasters. Definitely need additional outlets put in, and that's also in the project. And then if we have money left, it's also been talked about to run a sidewalk from the south side of the outside concrete pad to run somewhat of a sidewalk to the south down to the restrooms that are at the park. Right now, there is, there's none, and that, that would be much easier for people, especially if it's a wheelchair or elderly, to go to the restroom and back than walking across the ground. So that's, that's basically what the project is. And it, there's quite a bit of concrete that'll have to be removed. And that's why we've, we've got an estimated cost of eighty thousand for this project. We, we haven't got any bids yet. We haven't started into that process. Because we understand that we can't, probably could not start until the first of July of next year. Is that, is my understanding when the money will become available for the grant? I, I think I'm right on it.
That's right.
Yeah, it's fiscal.
We have a problem.
Fiscal year.
We have a problem with the first of July because we have Zering Days the end of July. Obviously, we can't have it tore up. So we're probably looking at the first of August to start. That's, that's kind of the, the date we're aiming to start the project, right after Zering Days. And get it going then. And I'm happy to say that the city is in a position and will be by next July to match our matching amount there. And we've got a couple different ways. The, this park shelter house has money in a, in a savings account from the rent they've collected over the years. And it might be that I'll go to the Park and Rec Board and request to use some of that for our match, to help out with part of our match. But I'm confident that we'll be able, we'll be able to meet that match. So we're hoping to re-renovate the park shelter. It's been there many years without much done. And our concern on the concrete is that someone tripping on, on the uneven edges and so forth.
Yeah.
You mean it since, nothing's been done to it since thirty-plus years ago?
Not that I can remember. I, I, I know the outside concrete pad was added after the shelter house was there. But I can't remember when that was for sure. It's been a long time ago. But then, I've been there a long time, but I still don't remember when that was done. I did not live in town at that time, so I don't remember. But it's, it's been several, really several years since much of anything's been done to the shelter. And it gets used quite a bit. We get a lot of, a lot of rentals through the course of the summer. And of course, it's used a lot over the Zering Days weekend. So we think it'd be a worthwhile project and, and one that could benefit the community.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
What's that?
The thank you for.
And I apologize for not being here last week. With everything going on, somehow, we've had a lot of changes in the last month, six weeks. And the message got lost in the, in the mail, I guess you'd say. And so I was not aware of it, or I would have been here, and I apologize for that. We, I visited with, with Craig, and we're gonna get that straightened out now so that things will be sent to Amy and at our Zering email, and we'll hope that that doesn't happen again.
All right.
No problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
And thank you, folks.
Thank you.
So I think we will probably be leaving. I've got another meeting. And I'm a slave driver. I gotta get my employee back to work. Thanks, lady.
Good to see you.
Have a nice day.
You too. Next, we have Emergency Management's Quarterly Report. Good morning, Melissa.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to have some time to speak this morning. Again, we continue to be pretty busy with the two of us. Back in July, when the county held their after-action report of the tornado event, we participated in that. And since then, I have been working with Crystal to determine the best approach to, for the county to develop an emergency operations plan for the unincorporated areas. So her and I are continuing to work on that. We did spend quite a bit of time on some planning activities. The Maxwell, Collins Maxwell School District, their superintendent asked us to come down and tour the renovated high school, middle, uh, middle school, I believe, yeah. And do a walkthrough and discuss their options for storm sheltering. We did have a little bit of a discussion about how storm shelters may not be the best sites also for active shooter events. And we did encourage them to work with the sheriff's office to have a discussion about what they would do if they had an active shooter event. But it was a great refresher for myself and for Josh to be able to see the building since the renovation. And I think we came up with some really good options for them for severe, severe weather events. North Crest Community in Ames reached out to us and wanted to have a discussion about developing evacuation plans for their campus. We had about a two-hour meeting with them, discussed their risks, and discussed some options for them. I believe they're going to hire a consultant to help them through the process, but it was a really great discussion. And again, good to see the campus again because it had been some time, and there has been a lot of changes up there. Our Hazard Mitigation Plan has finally been approved by FEMA back on August 19th. So we do not reset the clock on the plan. Well, we will not be putting the resolutions out probably until December and encouraging all of our jurisdictions not to adopt till January. If anybody adopts it early, it resets the clock on the plan, and we would just have to start working on it that much sooner. But it has been approved, which is great news. Again, some of the changes we had were very minimal. Josh has been leading the way in Story County with Stop the Bleed Training, been working with a lot of our partners from Public Health, the City of Ames, Mary Greeley and the Sheriff's Office. So far, they have worked with three, three school districts have been trained in the county, with ninety-one staff have completed training. He had a meeting last week with Ames folks to discuss getting the Ames School District up and going. So we anticipate our numbers just to continue to increase. And we'd like to thank Public Health for allowing us to use some of their grant funds to get this kicked off. And we will continue to work through the process. Josh and I also met with Ashley Thompson, the new CEO for United Way of Story County, discussed their role in the past in supporting emergencies and disasters in Story County by being a fiscal agent for locally donated money. She was going to go back and review and talk to her board, but didn't see any issue with not being able to continue that support. So it was good to finally get to meet her. We were scheduled to meet, and then the tornado happened, so it got postponed for a while. But we also did rely on them heavily during COVID because of their connections to the food banks. So they are a very important partner that we look forward to continuing to work with. September Preparedness Month, as you know, we're continuing to focus on our community contest for signing up. Our smaller communities are actually the ones in the lead right now, so we're still encouraging people to sign up. I would like to thank the board for allowing me to use Bryce again this year to help us with our communication efforts and getting that, getting the flyers and things out to our city halls and communities. To round up Preparedness Month, we will be doing a countywide test of the Story County Iowa Alert System on September 30th at 10:00 a.m. As you know, it's not a system that we use every day, so it's a good reminder and good way for the public to ensure they're getting their messages and for our folks that have signed up to see what the messages will look like when they come out. So that's just kind of the highlights. Any questions on anything?
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I did talk to a resident of Cambridge over the weekend who said that she attended the emergency preparedness session that was held there and that she really appreciated it and that she was disappointed to see that more people weren't there from the community, but is encouraging the people she knows to participate the next time something like that is available.
Yeah, and that's an initiative that RSVP has taken on called Prep Wise. That's through the University of Iowa Public Health. And they have trained some of their folks to go out and do these deliveries, which we are greatly appreciative of, that they have that capability. It expands sometimes on my limited capability to be able to get out and do some of those things. You know, RSVP has been a longtime partner of our office, and we do support them monetarily a little bit each year. But yes, we were very tickled to see that they were out doing those and getting those events, and they're keeping us apprised of all the folks that are being trained. So we're very appreciative of them.
I think they're gonna have another session in Roland. I don't think I've got the date.
Haven't seen it yet. Yeah, he's been good about sending those to me, but yeah, I haven't.
Yeah, they're working on one in Roland, so they're gonna try to get around the county. I don't think the next year I'm with them.
Yeah, it's a great concept, you know, just to help people, because it can be overwhelming when you're trying to figure out, how do I build a kit? How do I make a plan? And, and that program does a really good job of breaking it down into digestible chunks for people to be able to sit down and start doing that planning to make sure that they're ready and can take care of themselves.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Next, we have is consideration of the September 17th, 2024 minutes. I'd move approval.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Consideration of Personnel Actions.
I move approval of Personnel Actions as presented.
Second. They're moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Consideration of Claims. I'd move approval of Claims as presented.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Consent Agenda. Anything, anyone's pulling from Consent?
No.
No?
I would move approval of the items listed on the Consent Agenda.
Second. They're moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. To the right page. Looks like we have no public hearing items, so we're down to additional items. Discussion and Consideration of Resolution 25-25, a resolution supporting the work of the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust and their Circle of, and their Circle Our Cities Project for residents of Story County. Good morning, Leanne.
Good morning. And I believe Brianna's going to be promoted so that she can speak to this as well. Couple months ago, representatives from the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust, or Silt, visited with Story County and Supervisor Merkin about their Circle Our Cities project, as well as just the initiatives of Silt and how it may or may not be applicable to Story County. The resolution before you is a resolution that was primarily drafted by Silt, but then revised by Story County staff to reflect their initiative. And, and it does build into our work program for planning and development. We do have a local foods programming element on our work program for this current fiscal year. Just a couple things about Silt. They are a nonprofit that was established in 2015. Their mission is to secure, to secure present, and I can't read my writing, and steward threatened farmland, ensuring future generations of farmers have access to Iowa lands to produce healthy food in the most sustainable ways possible. They do use tools like conservation easements. In some cases, they actually do acquire the land as well as, but they make the connections with those wanting to enter farming, that really the purchase of land is one of the primary barriers. As we all know, land can be quite costly, especially in agricultural areas such as Story County. Again, it does fit into our work program and one of our ways of building partnerships for our local foods. Is she there? Yeah. Brianna, do you have anything you'd like to add about the resolution, the Circle Our Cities Project?
Yes, let me see if my video. I think that my video is disabled. This is the host disabled it, but can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Hi. Yes, thank you for considering this resolution of support. What we've put forward is simply, you know, we want to be good partners to the county and the cities that we work in, and we feel like extending this resolution of support is a pathway for us to work together to potentially identify what regions we would want to pursue easement or work with landowners, you know, in collaboration with the county, you know, what might be ideal spaces. And we do feel that, you know, with your endorsement, it aligns with your goals. And we're excited to work together, and I'm here to answer any questions about our organization and with our recent expansion across Iowa, but the Increasing Land Access Grant that we've received from the USDA.
Brianna, this is Lisa. I guess I have one question. Not so much because it's not spelled out in the resolution, but is this something that you'd be looking for funds through the county? Or is this just kind of recognizing practices?
Yep, this is just a, this is just the support for our work in your county, so we're not asking for any funds. We do have some existing funding currently, but at this time, we're not asking for, for any funds, and I don't foresee that we will be.
Thank you. That was my only question. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Thanks, Brianna.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I thought that you gave a great summary, so good job.
There are no other questions? Is there a motion? I would, I would move approval of Resolution 25-25.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Thanks, Brianna.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We're, hopefully we'll have our first protected farm in Story County, and we'll have a success story to share with all of you. Thank you for your support.
Thanks. Next, we have Leanne. Again, we have Discussion and Consideration of a Capital Improvement Plan Policy for Seven-Day Review.
Well, after the Capital Improvement Plan was approved last, thank you, Joby, last year, staff was directed to go forward and look at what other counties, cities do, develop a, develop a defined process procedures, bring it back to the board. We're a little bit later than we anticipated, which I'm sure you might have guessed if you saw the timeframes that are in, that are in the proposed policy. Nonetheless, we are here. What we did to get to where we are today is we reviewed a number of jurisdictions locally, Midwest, actually nationally, online, there are CIPs specifically contract, or contacted Polk County, Scott County, Johnson, Dallas, Dubuque, Lynn, and City of Ames to get an idea of what their procedures were. We had several questions. We asked them, do you, one, have a CIP? Do you have a evaluation component? Do you have a committee? Will you share your information? Do you have a policy? Only received feedback from Polk, Scott, and City of Ames. But we were able to take the information they provided. What we learned is in a lot of ways, we're ahead of everyone with our, our process we have with a, a committee in place. That being said, we can always improve, and that's what we're hoping to do with this policy, is really define it. And, and so the expectations are set clear before we go in and start getting applications. Several sections of the draft policy. There's the Purpose Statement, which is generally what we've seen in the introduction to the, the CIP. The Scope, this would apply if approved by the Board Supervisors to all departments and elected offices. Again, as the CIP is a component of your budgeting practice. The Guiding Policy Statements, do note in there that generally the CIP policy, the CIP program development would take four to six months. It really will, but again, we're behind where we wanted to be, so this year will be a shortened timeframe. But next year, if approved, we'd go back to the timeframe in here. I'll touch on the timeframe here a little bit as well. Let's see. Types of Projects and Requests are outlined. Again, it reiterates what's in the existing CIP, but the same types of projects, same threshold amounts. We have Responsibility Section that defines three entities, a project lead, which would be the Planning Development Department, a scoring committee, and that would be, the staff members are laid out in here, and I have spoken to those individuals, and they would agree to participate if the policy is adopted. And then our Planning Group, which really is the group that's been kind of overarching review of this over the years. But this would formally establish that as a committee. The Procedures Section outlines the timeframes and the steps. I did put on your, on your handout beforehand how these would be revised if the policy was adopted this year. It is a shortened timeframe. It would kick off really next week after we follow the seven-day review. Ideally, we'd be sending out applications the first of September. So we are definitely a month behind, so that is why the revised timeframe. I don't think we necessarily need to make revisions to the policy itself. Just note when this does go out that we are revising it for this first round. The, the policy also includes project prioritization and scoring. There are eleven criterion that are identified. Those do have weights established with them and a scoring max of one hundred seventy-five points. So that scoring committee would be the ones that would take that evaluation, evaluation matrix, come up with a score, and then present them to the planning group. And then we, in turn, the planning group would forward those onto the Board of Supervisors. It also includes CI, a section on CIP financing and debt management, and then application, the application and timeframe. Again, if approved today, subject to the seven-day review, we'll be back next week with the application and timeframe. Do you have any questions for staff?
I have, I have one question, right now, anyway. So the, the scoring committee, they'll score everything, but all of the applications will be presented to the planning group? Or does that filter out some of them?
I think the way we envisioned it, they would all be presented to a planning group with a de facto prioritization based on the, what the scoring group's findings are.
Okay. Great.
I just question why the lead is in Planning and Development. Ever since I've been with the county, Special Projects Manager has put together the CIP. And it does, it is inclusive of all departments in the county, and I don't understand why. And it's still in the Special Projects Manager job description. I don't understand why Planning and Development is the lead.
That's why we're here before the board to see if you want to make those revisions to the policy.
Well, I'm concerned that it takes a lot of work into planning and development. Also, this feeds into the board's budget, and it does deal with every department in the county. So I think it's more appropriate under the Board of Supervisors where the Special Project Manager is. That's, and, and first, I know, that's what I'm used to, but I started, so I tried to step back and look at it organizationally. You know, look at the, kind of the mission statement, what Planning and Development Department does, and it just doesn't fit to me.
What I will say, and we've had this conversation before, it's not unusual for Planning and Development Departments to manage capital improvements plans and programs. That's just a general statement. I mean, we are, as planners, that's one thing we are trained on, is the linkage between the CIP and how it relates to other plans and programs.
Title Planning and Development, it's talking about planning for land use. It's not talking about planning for the entire county government. That's my concern. You're broadening that to be planning for the entire county government, and I don't think that's where we need to be going.
That's where we seek direction from the board. I mean, you, you all are the overseers of County, Story County Government.
Okay. Well, my, my, my strong feeling is it should stay with the Special Projects Manager within the Board. Okay. Well, my, my, my strong feeling is it should stay with the special projects manager within the board office.
If, if that is the case and the direction too, there, there are some, um, modifications that would need to be made. Um, well, I think there'd need to be some discussions whether modifications would need to be made because the way it's set up right now, the CIP lead does not score the, uh, the CIP lead is just the, the manager of the project, keep that going. And the, the COSPM position does score these, the value, the applications.
I think my question would go along with what Supervisor Merkin said is if it's in the communications, operations, that position. We'd almost have to revise that position because we'd be taking that, that workload off of them. If it's always been with them. I guess that would be kind of a question that I would. Isn't, I just want to make sure I'm clear with what you said in the special projects.
I think it's been with the special projects manager ever since the position was created. That's my understanding.
Sure, sure, sure. Well, I know since I've been here, that's where it's been.
And we have a full-time special projects manager. And it's in the job, that, it's in that job description.
That's what I meant. Thank you. A little tongue tied on a Tuesday morning.
I, I think, I think it's important though to, to circle back to, it's a plan. And, and the planning department is trained to, to manage plans. Like they're planners. That's what they do. And I think it may have been under that umbrella because of the skill sets that were coming into that position.
We have a full-time special projects manager and planning is one of the things in that, in that job description. I'm just concerned that it's going to take time away from the primary focus of planning and zoning. And, and it's a lot of, pulling a lot more work into that department. When is that going to be? Well, we'll need another planner because we have planners busy doing all this other work that's pulled in. I think that's a real issue.
Another question I have, Leann, is, um, it may be the same question that Supervisor Faisal just asked. I'm going to ask it a little differently, just to make sure I'm clear on it. So, looking at the current one, we have several, we look out several years. So, is that what you're saying is they would, would they reapply? Or if they'd applied for things, do you reevaluating the current ones that are in process? I'm just trying to think, is we've got a five-year plan? And then if you're reapplying, what happens? Does this move up? Does this move behind?
If you look at the, um, timeframe that I, the one sheet I handed out, because that's easier to refer to. Step number two, um, says, and this is language directly in the policy. I just, for ease of use, I wanted to put on a separate sheet because of the revised timeframe this year. CIP project lead staff members follow up with the offices, development departments to verify what current projects are still planned for the upcoming years. What we would do this first year, what we anticipate, anticipated during this first year is not scoring the ones that are already in initially. Um, because one, there's going to be a learning curve to, to, um, understand the valuation, evaluation, evaluation matrix. Um, but then after the CIP is adopted, there'll be more time to go back and score them and catch up. And then when we go into year one next year, we'll be able to hand those scores out um, for the projects already in and have them revise accordingly. So the, long way to answer your question, we internally, staff would review those, working with those offices and departments, see what changes in those applications need to be made, budgeting, scope, whatever it may be. But those would not be scored this first year. But going forward, they would be scored.
So every, so they'd still be kind of the priority area? Is that what you're saying then? I mean, if they're not scored the first year?
Our current projects, um, they would just be carrying forward. Yeah, I the time we, if we were to score, um, regardless of who does it, to be able to meet the timeframe because we're so far in. If we scored all the existing ones this year, first year, we probably wouldn't, would not want to add any new projects in because we have a lot in the CIP this year.
Right. I think that's what I'm kind of getting at, maybe, is, yeah, if we're looking at fiscal year twenty-six, and we've got several projects in there. Do they languish there? Do they move, move in more for the supervisors to discuss? Yes, we want to move forward this, or are we getting several new ones for potentially twenty-twenty-six?
Yes.
Some of that may move. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out, is then prioritizing new ones with the ones that are already listed?
For this, if this policy were to adopt, to be adopted, yes, to your question, we'd have both this first year.
Gotcha.
Um, just the fact of the timing.
Okay. Thank you.
And then every year, all of the projects get scored again, right?
Other questions? Comments? I will have to kind of agree with Supervisor Merkin. I do have a concern that the lead is your department, nothing against your department at all. I think you all do fantastic work, but just looking at that, the role and the job description of the special projects and outreach position that this would fall under their responsibility. That would be my one. One question or comment.
So, are, are you thinking then? Are you, what, what you're proposing then is to swap out where county outreach and special projects manager is as far as scoring committee and planning group with planning and development?
I think that would be where I would be, be looking at. Uh, my question though is also is for this year. I mean, I do think, I do think it needs to be in, um, outreach and special projects. I'm also looking at the timeline and, and how the two would work together for this particular time, for the, for this year's timeline.
Well, what I would suggest, I mean, Leann, you've been working with the new special projects manager on training on a whole lot of things. What I would suggest is that you work with that person this year to, to go through this process and that it transition fully to the special projects manager next year.
So I think your policy would stay as is for right now. Come forward with.
Forward with. I think it's, it's good work. It's a great policy. We're just, all we're talking about is where do we see it? Where it should reside in county government? I think that's the only issue. And it's, yeah.
Oh, thank you. Sandra?
Yes, hi. Um, I'd just like to make a suggestion, it's sort of similar, I guess, to what Linda, um, was just saying. But how, how about we pilot it for this year and then evaluate it after that, rather than assuming that it won't, um, work effectively if left the way that it's proposed?
I'm not sure what you're, what you're suggesting, Sandra. Could you be a little clearer?
I'm suggesting that we pilot it this year, the way that it's laid out in the proposal, in the policy. And then we evaluate that, um, to see if it ended up being a good fit in planning and development or not.
I, I wouldn't be for adopting the policy and then having to un-adopt it later. So I wouldn't want to do that if we wanted to use it as guidance. But I, I don't, I simply think it doesn't belong in planning and development. So I don't want to, um, adopt a policy that, I don't want to be voting for a policy where, that I don't think is the way it should end up being.
I thought that was what, I, I thought that was what we were just talking about. Let's do it this way and then come back next year.
I was, I was talking, all I said was I suggested that Leann and Crystal work together on this mutually this year with the goal of it being solely the special project manager's responsibility next year. Just the transition that I saw happening with training in the position, anyway.
Sure, sure. But would we need a policy adopted to do that?
I don't think, I don't think we would.
I, I'm just wondering, since we have the plan policy here, that's, that's, that's where I'm unclear, is do we need to have something changed to say because the, the process is changing? The process is changing to say to work in conjunction with the special projects?
We've been doing this CIP for many years without this. Are there any other changes in the policy, Leann?
We have not had a, a, a sound evaluation component.
Okay.
And that has really been, what's been driving some of the, um, uncomfortable discussions that have occurred, um, with the planning committee, the board supervisors. This policy was designed specifically to establish that element.
Okay, I, I, um, here's one I would ask. If you would bring it back to us, bring the policy back to us, if the lead changed from planning and development to special projects manager? And with any other changes that you think need to be made with that change? I'm not going to go through it right now, every line and try to find everything because you wrote it, so you probably have a better idea. But I'm assuming that any other changes would be minimal.
Yeah, I would think it would just be responsibility, in the responsibilities section.
Yeah, yes. We can talk and it, this was a, my, um, mind meld of several of us too.
Yeah, I think, like you said, Latifah, I think most of it's, the changes are in the responsibilities section, but we would read through everything and confirm that anytime the lead is mentioned, it's referring to the COSPM position instead of the planning and development department. But yeah, I think it's primarily all of it is, the language is in the responsibilities section, but.
How far behind is that going to put us then in the process? Two, two weeks? Because we'd, we'd have next week and then seven day review.
I don't mind if you start the process. So I don't think the process is going to, the process, these steps, I don't think this is going to change.
It will be.
It would if you have it go up for seven day review.
This is, the, the step, um, yeah, the step right here, uh, and the timeframe are related to the seven day review. Um, and so we would send out the applications next week. Um, spend this week getting those ready internally. And then, um, okay, answer a question. I, I get a little bit concerned pushing out further because timing of Thanksgiving this year is the last week of November. And it does tend to kind of shift everything a little bit with our holiday schedules.
Okay, here's all I'm saying is we've been doing a capital improvements plan for years and years without having this policy. I'm not sure why you can't start some of these things as you would have if you didn't have the policy. I don't want to be, you know, you see what I'm saying?
It, it, although if you do have the criterion, we did want to build the criterion in the application so that department heads and elected officials knew how they would be scored too. So yes, I understand. We, we can be doing some work and, um, but we formally cannot send anything out until the board takes action on the applications and timeframe and.
And maybe you could send out a proposed policy.
Could you do, could you do something, for example, that, uh, I'm not making a motion, I'm just throwing out something that would sound like one. Like, like moving ahead with the approval of the capital improvements plan policy, with the caveat that the lead changes to the communications and special projects manager. And those changes would need to be noted throughout the policy to then be sent out for seven day approval.
Or with respond, the responsibilities of the
And the, the responsibilities. Which? Right, but that planning and development will work with the communications special project manager for this first year.
The only, the only issue I see is, is with this, we changed the actual application and the date to send out applications to all offices and departments is October second. But without the policy actually being in place, we can't, we really shouldn't send out the updated.
No, I, I agree.
Application.
That, I guess that's what I'm saying is, could you do a motion to approve with that changes as discussed here? So that it could then still go out on, so we're approving it, noting that these are the changes we've, like, done.
Okay.
Good.
Then yeah.
So, that way it wouldn't put you behind on the timeline.
So, question. Would, so if we have the CIP project lead, um, under responsibilities, change that to special projects manager? Scoring committee, then would planning and development stay on the scoring committee?
They swap?
It would be.
Yeah.
It would be added.
Okay, we change, we ju- we just switch planning and development department director and special projects manager throughout, throughout the
Response.
Throughout this. So this would keep your expertise in here?
Or someone from.
Or someone from, okay, but, yeah. Uh, but it would, okay, keep it with a special projects manager, okay. I make the motion that under responsibilities, that we adopt the policy with fallen change. Under responsibilities, the CIP project lead becomes the, uh, county outreach and special projects manager. And then on the CIP scoring committee, we change special projects manager to planning and development director. And then just, pardon?
You want director or staff? Sorry, it's your motion. I should have stayed quiet. I apologize.
It's okay. That's a good point. Um, director or staff would be fine with me. Under CIP planning group, um, again, well, we don't have that for facilities management, no. Yes, I think it's implied. Let's change it. So CIP scoring committee, it's planning and development director. And CIP planning committee, it's planning and development director rather than special projects manager. That's my motion, if that's clear enough. Under the three responsibilities, we're just switching special projects. Special projects manager and planning development director.
There a second? I'll second for sake of discussion. Can we just, can we clean it up so that it's just? Exchange the responsibilities of. Planning and Development Department and County Outreach and Special Projects in case. My concern is it's so very specific that if we've missed something, then it's going to cause a problem. Like, we're going to have to come back in and fix it.
Let's just look quickly and see if it does.
I guess a question I also have is, I think this is the right move is to move it to our communications special operations manager. I know that that position is very busy with the ARPA things going on right now. Just want to make sure that the two are able to work together for this particular year. Do not overload. That communications position.
So when I do a search, I only find specifically planning and development mentioned once, and that's under responsibilities.
So I think the motion, I think the motion's good as I suggested it. Is that what you're saying?
I would just like to add, I, I, I'm with Latifah. I think it simply just needs to be. Switch the responsibilities of the COSPM and planning and development department, just to make it clean.
Okay, that's the motion now. Under responsibilities, where it says planning and development department becomes county outreach and special projects manager. Where it says county outreach and special projects manager becomes planning and development department.
I would second that amendment.
Pardon?
For seven day review, yes. Send it for seven day review.
Is that the motion or is that the amendment?
Just add it to the motion.
Okay. Okay.
Right?
Any more just? Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Hutton's aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next we move on. We don't have departmental reports, so we have some other reports. Leanne?
Leanne.
Discussion and consideration of potential revisions to the facade improvement grant program.
Um. Annually, the board supervisors budgets $10,000 for this program. The program is designed to provide financial assistance to our smaller communities, so those under 2,000 persons, according to 2020 census. And they work with businesses for facade improvements. We award up to whichever is less, up to 20% of the project or $10,000. I think I said that backwards. The maximum is $10,000. Program runs on reimbursement basis. There is a condition in the program guidelines on the bottom of page one that specifies. Under eligibility that in addition, any projects that have commenced prior to their approval by the county shall be ineligible for grant funding. I did have a inquiry from the city of Slater. Whether or not an emergency repairs would be eligible and according to the language right now, it would not be. And in this particular instance, what happened was they were getting ready to apply for a facade grant program. They were doing some tuck pointing, how I understand it, just to get the nature of the, the, some maintenance underway, a lentil. I think crumbled. They had to go do an emergency repair to do that. That would not be an eligible expense. I spent some time researching some other programs. Not a whole lot, a whole bunch of counties have saw grant programs. I ran into a couple, I think it's Indianola. Does allow for emergency repairs. So what, that's what I'm before you today to see if you would want, want to consider drafting amendments. To the program guidelines to allow those emergency repairs. And if so, we would bring it back for approval by the board at a future date and time.
They would still submit an application?
Right. But be basically be an after the fact. We'd have to carefully word that and set some criteria and. See how they are directly related to that facade improvement. But truly a lentil project is a facade project. And they did intend to come in, but could not, it could not wait.
This project might seem like it's, you know. I'm just afraid what doors we might be opening on it and what difficulties we might get into in terms of, well, is this really facade or is this? Something else? Is this something they would have come in for to do? I, it, it, it seems like we've got some clear criteria now and we'd just be opening it up to be kind of messy.
I understand the need to do it, but I, I do think there would be. I think there would be an awful lot of work to make sure it, it met that emergency and was really related. That would just be my concern.
Do you have any ideas?
I'm sorry. I was trying to see if Jennifer from Slater was on.
Do you have any ideas on how it could be worded to ensure that it was just? That it was very narrow or not yet?
Not yet. I didn't, I really did not want to expend a lot of staff resource and research to. Come up with that if it was not a direction that the board wanted and which the board wanted to proceed.
I'm kind of thinking our current policy is fine.
My favor should be just staying with the current policy.
Does that give you the direction you need?
It does.
All right. Next we move on to discussion and direction on the nature of improvements for the temporary debris site. Got Marcus and Joby?
Good morning again.
Morning.
Morning.
Yes, we're here.
Morning, Marcus.
Morning, board.
We're going to talk about. Kind of where we've been with the debris site and suggestions on next steps to move forward, get a little bit of direction. To kind of see. Leanne, Marcus and I kind of worked on this memo, trying to piece together. Kind of what, you know, synopsis of where we started. You know, where we went with it and then we activated it so that kind of. Kind of slowed down our process of bringing things to you. Our probably largest concerning thing moving forward is. The purchase agreement, we have to put a perimeter barrier around the property. In the purchase agreement, it's the. Selling previous property owners.
Wanted a berm.
And berm.
Yeah.
And we did reach out to them about some other acceptable options they would consider. One of which was doing a kind of a tree and shrub planting around it. Was one that they would consider. I wouldn't say that they were completely accepting of it, but. So we kind of pieced together some costs associated with that. Perimeter barrier. And those are on page three of the memo. So I figure we kind of talk about that right now and get questions about that out of the way and then we can kind of talk about. Other things we need to do with the site, things that we tend to do in-house and things that we might foresee happening to. Contract for.
Right.
Hire for, so um. If you want, table three kind of has four combinations we looked at and we got some background information on. On the things that you see in there with dollar amounts. I'll start with, with option A. Which is an earth berm on three sides. Every scenario has a fence gate system on the north end. Which is something I feel is if we're going to keep this site as a debris site, we have to have. Because we've already experienced, not high level, but we have experienced illegal dumping on the site since we activated it after the tornado.
And after all the stuff was taken.
And after all the stuff was taken off, we have inherited some appliances in the last probably three weeks.
Yeah.
Last time anybody's been out there. Not a large quantity, but. Those things I fear will continue to ramp up as people get away with it, so to speak, so. Lockable gates at the entrance to it, I think is. Kind of a necessity. I mean, so perimeter barrier is a necessity because it is, that is part of the purchase agreement. We did. Get an extension, so we have till January of 2026 to have that completed. So the first one is, is what they preferred, which was in, was earth berm. And that would be, that cost includes utilizing what dirt is on the site at their disposal and then trucking in the remainder of what's needed. And as you can see, that's $67,000 for the earth berm. And that would have native prairie planting on the berm once it's complete and that is included in. You will see there's, I don't know if it's on here, but I have a cost for. Prairie planting.
Six thousand?
$6,200 and that's with conservation applying that seed. We purchased the seed, they will application it, so. And then the $36,300 for the. The chain link fence and two gates, one on the entrance and one on the exit. The tree shrub planting option. Includes, it's 15,000 for the plants and it's 410 individual plants and then. We, I used the figure of the average of a little over $100 per plant for planting because that's the average cost to. Put the plants in the ground. Because looking at doing that work in-house.
Was going to be.
Yeah, like facilities management A does not have the equipment to do it. Conservation does have the equipment to do it, but doesn't have the staff. To do it. Secondary roads. Doesn't really have either available, so it's, and. They kind of left it up to, plus then if we plant them ourselves, it. There's the thing with, if there's loss with the plant, they're generally not covered. Because the company providing the plants didn't plant them in the ground and then. So that's the just straight up front costs. And then there would be additional costs and it was hard to put a number together because of all the varying situations watering of the plants. Primarily that first year that they're there. And then.
It was what, 50 gallons per plant?
Yeah, over the course of like a two week period in the beginning.
Right.
And then.
So like a lot of water, a lot of time watering as well.
And then plus the, the same cost for the, the chain link fence and gates. Without any costs associated with keeping the plant, you know, the watering, because as I said, that was too hard to weave. We've got, we put together some numbers on. Do we buy in bulk? Do we buy a, a large water tanker to take out there? And then there's a lot of costs associated with hoses. You know, and getting them, we even have, you know, there's a cost in this memo about getting rural water to the site. In lieu of trying to truck it there, but we would still need the watering tank is, you know, it's a. Roughly 18-ish acre site in getting water to all.
The entire perimeter of that.
Around it.
So 4,000 is the current hookup.
Yeah.
Cost.
Yep.
And is that the Iowa utilities that goes by there?
I can't remember which one goes, but one of them does go.
Yeah, and we got that cost from them.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's getting water to the site, basically.
Frostless.
Yeah, frost free hydrant that you would see, you know, your standard. You'd see on a farm.
There's the key co-op just a few miles from there. Do they still have water? They still let farmers get water?
I, that I don't know. We looked at reaching out with City of Nevada buying bulk water.
Yeah.
Would that be getting a tank?
Have to get the tank.
You'd still have to, but you'd still have to buy a tank and you'd have to get it there.
Mounted on.
Used to give farmers water for free.
That could be.
I'm going to go over dude. I don't know, just wondered. It's still, it's not a lot. I mean, probably good to have a hook up there.
Yeah, even if, if we went this route, I think the, having a water hook up there, it would just be.
Good thing.
A good idea.
Yeah.
Regardless of what direction we went for the perimeter barrier. And then we've kind of, and I don't know if we got any. Further detail, official quotes on, we were approached by. Goats on the go about potentially leasing the property if we put some infrastructure in. As of today, we didn't get any official what they would. Pay us to, to rent the property. So that was, the option C has. $21,000 initial cost for an ag fence if we went that route, but. We was hoping to get an actual number back today, but we didn't.
Yeah.
And we didn't want to hold this discussion up any further than it's already been, so. The $21,000 for the ag fence, I think at this time. That's something we could do down the road if we choose, once we have an actual.
Lease amount or how much.
Yeah, so we can determine is there a return on that investment, you know, what kind of revenue could we generate from this site? But there is some interest also from secondary roads to use the site for lay down.
Right.
Of materials, so it might not even be an option, so I'm going to. Option C as of today is not something that we're, probably D as well. Aren't going to really discuss much because we don't have enough information to really determine if that's.
So the ag fence is something that would go inside the berm?
Correct, or inside the, the trees and shrubs, yeah.
Okay.
And essentially how that would work is they would, we would still move with the native plantings and then they would just, they would use their own electric fence once we did the perimeter fence. And move their herd around the property.
And they would definitely want water.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And electricity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think. For purposes of today, I think talking about option A and B. The earth and berm versus the tree and shrub planting, I think we'll start right now.
Did the owners or the sellers, did they have a preference?
They preferred the berm, which would be an eight foot tall.
Yep.
Berm.
Well, I wish we had talked earlier about a tree and shrub planting because it certainly, when this was done, because it certainly would add value. I mean, in terms of, you know, being natural, a berm is just a, you know, pile of. Pile of dirt and we'd have to bring in a lot of dirt that wasn't originally on that site. You know, if we could get them to go with the tree and shrub planting, I would much rather have that.
They didn't say no, right? So. They were open.
I mean, we can.
To having the discussion about.
If that's the direction the board wants us to take, we will pursue it until we've exhausted it or got a.
Would you be looking at natives?
That was the, the goal. We, we had a. Conservation provided us with a list of suggested plans. I don't have that in front of me, so, but yes, native plantings was. And purchasing through one of their distributors, vendors that they use.
Yeah.
And regardless of everything, we're still talking about running water.
Yeah, I think moving forward, water and electric on the site, we should just have in good faith for.
Right.
Yeah, because if we have potable water, you know, when we're, if it's activated as a debris site, that's something we have to have available, so.
Especially having a staff out there and all those things, so.
Okay.
So is this going to be the bottom line sum of what we need for the debris site or are there going to be other things coming to us?
There'll be other things coming. This is, since we have a timeline on this perim- There'll be other things coming. This is, since we have a timeline on this perimeter barrier, we need a direction on it, because. We've already had to get one extension. Because it originally was supposed to be completed by one year from the date of title transfer, which was.
It was the. Sixth of July.
Mm-hmm.
So, they did agree to the January of twenty twenty six, but we're doing a large planting. We need to be able to move forward with it. Well, we need to talk to them, get approval, and then move forward with the planting, and if it's a berm, that also takes time, so.
I think what I'm hearing is. Correct me if I'm wrong, that. Kind of like the tree and shrub planting for. To have some discussions with them.
Okay.
And if they're not amenable to that. Then I guess we go look at option A. Is that what I'm kind of hearing from discussions here?
Have a strong preference for natural.
Yeah. Right, it's, but.
Yeah.
Purchase agreement was written in a way that.
Mm-hmm, so it's not a guarantee that that's.
Yeah.
That they will. Agree to that, but like Marcus pointed out, we presented them with it as an option explaining. What an earth berm entails, and they were open to.
Having more discussion.
Having more discussion.
Right.
And then we can, you know, and a lot of these costs are. You know, given we had multiple different options we looked at in various things that the site needs. We didn't want to continually bug contractors to give us. Estimates when we weren't even sure if it's what direction we were going, so. Part of this, if we're gonna entertain the tree shrub plantings, will confirm that that is something that the. That would satisfy the purchase agreement with the previous owners, and then move forward with the definite cost of what it would.
Is the.
See.
Is the prairie seed for the entire lot?
Correct, other than, yeah.
The six thousand, yeah.
Then you won't need to, you won't need to mow it two times a month after it's established, you won't need to mow it.
No.
Yeah, I was just, I, that, that caught me, it said mowing two times a month, and I thought, why would you do that if you're growing prairie on it?
Yeah, I mean, depending on the seed, and I'm not a, a prairie expert, but I know the first year you can't just let it grow and then.
Yeah, four times.
Yeah.
Four times for the first couple of years.
Don't you have to burn it periodically?
Um, if you have a CRP contract, you've got mid-contract maintenance, which is every five years, new burner mow. But other than that, after the first couple of years, you don't need to, you don't need to mow it. In fact, you'd be, you'd be hurting it if you were mowing it twice a month after that.
Yeah, yeah, and I, we just put that in there, because we knew that there would be some initial upkeep on it that isn't gonna happen for free.
Yeah, Brandon could give you all the information you needed on that.
If, if the landowners or the sellers, I guess I should say, where the landowners are, um. Open to. The, uh, tree shrub plantings. Would you then have a new contract, so it references that, or would you not need that?
I think that it would probably be best to have that in, in writing.
Written agreement.
So that we're not in, on. February of twenty twenty six, where's our berm?
Yeah.
Or five years down the line.
Yeah.
That, that was the original thing was to have a berm.
It needs to be mo, it'll have to be modified, yeah.
Yeah, we'll work with the county attorneys, just like we did to get the extension, that's a. We had them.
So, okay.
We drafted up them.
And then she sent it, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for them?
Well, I noticed in, on page four. The last bullet point, amending CIP and budget for FY twenty five. Um, do we, do we need to talk about that right now? Like. Where? Where we're funding it from, or is that a later conversation?
CIP, yeah.
Hi.
Hi. There's fifty thousand, as it says, in the FY twenty five budget for, for. Whatever needs to happen for this fiscal year, if we need to amend that, then yes, we would talk about it at budget time and amendment time.
Okay, okay, okay.
Can ease. Fairly easily do that.
Okay, okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure we didn't need to talk about it now.
Okay.
So it sounds like op B is the preferred.
So.
That works with them.
So we'll start that discussion then, and come back to you all with.
Yeah, and then we'll, and then as we're touching base on. The other improvements required, because once we have. Confirmed that we can do the. The native plantings as the perimeter barrier, then we'll bring back the total cost of that and then. Talk about the water and the electric to the site, and then we would get into other things that we, we still currently need to do with the site. A lot of it's got to do with the grading of it.
Yeah.
And, um, currently right now, um, secondary roads is. Hoping they will be able to provide that to us. Darren's working with. Um, his staff right now to confirm, because. They don't have all the necessary equipment to traditionally grade the site, but they're gonna see if they can accomplish it with their equipment. So. We kind of have that kind of lingering. But regardless if. Secondary roads can do the, um. Grading, site, site grading for us, um. We still have to. There's a MPDS permit through the Iowa DNR that we would need to have, and then, um, for our own. Regulations, we would have to have silt fence around the property, so.
And we'll have to. Map and buffer the wetland that's on there, um. We are able to get a no permit required from. Um, Army Corps. Provided that we don't touch that area. So basically a third of the site. We can't use, um, in order to get the no permit required, so.
And.
We'll have to map that and.
And fence it.
And fence.
Regardless of what we, we do with the rest of the site, so, and the fencing of the, um. Around the, the wetlands is about ten thousand dollars, and then. Silt fencing. For the property is somewhere around the eight thousand dollar range estimated, um. So when we come back, we will try to have all those costs, so we have the final dollar amount. But we wanted, our big thing was is the, the perimeter barrier for today.
How you want us to.
How you want us to pursue, yeah, what option wanted us to pursue?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. I think that covers everything.
Anything else? Option B.
So option B.
Well, it certainly showed its worth this year. So it's worth it to me, it seems like, you know, we got this piece of property and we're putting a lot of money in it, but we're putting a mu, the money in it for some good reasons. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next we have discussion and direction on to staff to compile amendments to the urban renewal plan. Yan, hello?
We're actually gonna turn it over to Wayne and Lisa to start with, and then Andrea and I'll come back up.
Okay.
Go first. Okay. Well, good morning, board.
Morning.
Morning.
One of the first few times, I think I've sat at this position here. Um, Leanne had asked me to just give a little update on, uh. On the TIF area, I guess, or, uh, we had four wind towers that were removed last year. They're owned by Agland Energy, one, two, three, and four, there's four wind towers. And the towers were, um. Taken out of operation and tore down last fall. And so we took them off as of January first of, uh, twenty four. And so that would affect taxes that are payable the fall of twenty four and the spring of twenty, or excuse me, fall of twenty five and the spring of twenty. Yeah, yeah, twenty five and twenty six. Um, so the chart I gave you shows each one of them what the assessed value is. One, eight hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand dollar range, that's thirty percent of the net acquisition cost and how we do wind towers. The wind towers, we take their net acquisition cost, and they're phased in over a seven-year period of time. The first year it's at zero, and five percent is added each year until the seventh year, and it's at thirty percent. And then it stays up there until they're. Uh, operational and tore down, which is the situation. This is the first time we've had, had a situation like this with wind towers. Um. So we're taxable value of those four towers, you're gonna lose about two and a half million dollars. The tax rate, um, I got listed there for each of those, it's Warren Township, um, Colonesco School District, I think is most of them. Uh, the total lost is runs fifteen, sixteen thousand, for the forum, it's sixty four thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Now, these estimates are based on the current tax rate, so you're gonna have a different tax rate for the upcoming budget next time. The county share of that sixty four thousand would be a little over, just about nineteen thousand dollars, that would be lost. And, um. So that. That, I can say, that'd be for the twenty-four assessment for the taxes of fall of twenty five and the spring of twenty six. Um, and the acquisition cost of those four towers was a. About ten million, five hundred thousand, about two point six million apiece, when they're built back in two thousand twelve. So I don't know if anybody had any other questions, or. I just broke out the county share on that, it's about thirty percent. Schools would run fifty-six to fifty-seven percent, because they have a higher chunk of the total, so.
And they don't have an obligation to, like, leave their. Structures in operation until the end of the, until the sunset period?
No, not if they tear them. What happened, just kind of generally from my understanding. The utility company that they sold electricity to, I don't know if they had an eight, ten-year contract with them. And, uh, when this came to renew it, the utility company would only pay them about twenty percent of what they were paying them. So they probably were kind of squeezed out, they had no other options. And they had stuck a lot of money in it in the last few years, upgrading to meet their specifications, and then. They couldn't agree on the contract, so.
Hmm.
They ended up tearing them down, it cost them several million dollars to tear them down.
So these are some of the turbines that were repowered a few years ago?
Uh, yes, uh, they were built in two thousand twelve, and he had told me, the owner, um, it was Swanson's. They told me, um. They had met, changed some things to satisfy the utility company, have some law changes. And I think they spent five, six million dollars at that time, they upgraded them. Maybe four years ago, and then now this happened, and I think it cost him, I don't know, two, three million to tear them down.
So they've, all four of them have already been torn down?
Yes. So they'd come off the January first of twenty four assessment.
Gotcha.
Yep. And this would be the potential loss based on current tax rates. They probably won't vary very much from, I mean.
Well, the rate you're.
Yeah.
The rate you're using goods debt service, and that's not part of.
Yeah, that's true, I just use the debt service. There's several other entities.
So, so, you know, the moral of the story is, it's all a guess. On TIF as, on, on the valuations, on the, um. It's, it's the valuations on the, um, levy rates, on the, where the property's, or where the wind tower's located, it's all a, um. Projection and estimation at this point in time.
Yeah, the, the valuation, tax evaluation would be the value, because it's.
Right.
Nine, it's industrial is, uh. First, I'm fifty thousand on value, they pay in the residential rate, which is about forty-six percent, and everything over a hundred fifty thousand, they pay in ninety percent. So this, this value ends up being about eighty, eighty-one percent of the total. Uh, based on that formula, that was changed here a couple, two, three years ago. When they did away with the business tax credit. Were any other questions on valuation?
So what I did was re, um, estimate your TIF revenues. For, with those four wind towers removed for one, one of twenty four, obviously it doesn't change twenty-five, because twenty-five is already happening. Um, we, your, your option for twenty-five was just to levy what was needed, or just access. What was needed in order to pay off the final debt. So that's the why for FY twenty-five, we accessed two eighty-two nine. Gonna pay off the debt, we're hoping, um. So for FY twenty-six, then the new projected revenue is nine hundred and twenty-five, seven seventy-eight, as you can see, that lasts until. Thirty, two thousand, FY thirty. Um, then the, they start falling off after that, because they were twenty-year. Um. The tip, they, they all sunset after twenty years, so the last one is thirty-eight. Um, the projections here are the fifty percent. They represent the fifty percent that is referenced in the, in your policy, okay? Um. So, Story County has funded to date projects totaling two point two million dollars. Um, in addition to Dakens and, and the Talc air, uh, Talc Park. Um, we have borrowed seven point one eight five, as you can see at the bottom. Um, we borrowed for Dakens and then three phases of Talc. Um, that last phase is the one getting paid off in June. So. Um, at this point in time, my estimation is that you have fifty percent. If you want to use that fifty percent for projects, for urban renewal projects. This, this is the projection of what you will have annually to do so. And if you don't, we don't levy for, or we don't take those dollars, we just leave them in the, in the, um, tax revenues. My understanding, from what I've seen that Leanne has brought forward, um, there's seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars worth of requests. For urban renewal for the twenty-six year. Any questions?
Um. Seven hundred and sixty-four thousand for FY twenty-six, that's what our requests are so far.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there's another thing we may want to look at doing out of twenty-six funds if we receive a grant. That Mepa has just applied for, for broadband digital equity grant with commerce. Um, we did yes, wow, two, last week? But just last week, okay, we did, we, um. We, uh, agreed to a hundred and twenty thousand over for a four-year time period. As a grant match for that grant. And we had some discussion at that time that could come out of fund balances, or maybe could come out of TIF, so I did want to bring that up right now.
I think I would refer to Leanne as to whether that's, um, a. Urban renewal plan.
Eligible.
We did discuss it. I did discuss it with Leanne, so.
I think with the revisions that were made to the policy, oh, two years ago, um. Where you, the Board of Supervisors added a, a kind of a prioritization. List, um, consistency with the strategic plan is one of those, and broadband is part of the strategic plan, so I think. There is that nexus there. Um, but the key would be, you would have to, when you take action to amend the plan, we need that language built in. Before that plan is adopted. Um, otherwise, we cannot obligate the debt for that. The, the board cannot obligate the debt for that, does that make sense? Just like, it'd be another project we would build in. Um, and I do have, is that a hundred twenty thousand each year for four years?
No, for the four-year period. And there may be some. And there may be some flexibility as to when we could contribute ours because there's other matched sources. And they, in fact, it just depends on when we haven't said what year, what entity will be matching. What would the deadline be then? When would we have to have that in the plan?
Our schedule. We would seek direction today to build that into the plan because we would be bringing a draft plan forward, I lost my schedule. Forward by the, on the eighth is when we bring the draft plan for first review of the Board of Supervisors. It's really important that we keep the schedule because we do need to amend our chapter eight urban renewal, which we've not done for several years to remove the turbines that have been removed from the property. And that does take several weeks, as you know, as an ordinance. Um, and then we have to make sure that we have everything finalized by no later than December first and we get much closer than middle of November, I think we all get a little bit nervous. So we, we would, I would ask that you build that into the direction on the projects to build that you give to staff today. We would draft that into the language.
So one question, what if we don't get the grant then, we take it out?
That's not that easy.
No, not that easy.
I, you're better off as far as
Better off with general fund.
You're better off using unassigned general funds.
Okay. That was the question I needed to ask before we decided to do that, so because we, because that grant is, we may get it, but we don't know for sure.
It, it is a, it is an appropriate use of TIF dollars according to our policy, but the way the mechanisms are set up, once something is in that plan.
That's it.
It's in that plan.
Then we'll just stay with ending fund balance.
Okay. Um, so you've heard from all four, all five jurisdictions now that did apply, as was indicated, seven hundred some thousand dollars was requested. Um, I did note Mayor Hurd today mentioned eighty thousand dollars, the application showed eighty-five thousand.
I did notice that.
So we need to
Sixty-three, seven fifty, so the amount I gave you was wrong, I, I don't know why I had sixty. That was the amount requested.
That's the, that they've requested, yeah, sixty-three.
Oh, gotcha.
But he, he said the project was eighty thousand today.
I think he was saying the total project with the city match.
Right.
Uh, but that would be under your twenty-five percent threshold for matching. Um, I think it's twenty-one percent, if I did quick math, if the project is eighty thousand, so I'd need to clarify that um, with the city of
His, his application says eighty-five thousand, right? And I, yeah, he may have miss, may have misspoke, following up with him would be a good idea.
So today we, we need direction from the board, how to proceed, um, specifically in the memo, page three. Um, we've outlined the sections of the plan that need to be modified. Um, if you would like to fund all the projects in total as were presented, um, if you'd like to fund only a few projects, not all of them, if you'd like to fund just components of the projects, that's the direction we need today. Um, and if we need to come back next week, we have built that in and then we would start officially on the eighth with action on the plan. Are there questions for the process and are any other questions for the the jurisdictions that have applied that we need to follow up with? I did ask last week, if you recall, um, or maybe the week prior, Katie with City Collins mentioned that they've already completed the pickleball courts. I asked her that, she indicated that as part of their match. That, that amount, and I added up the components. If you take out that, it's still, it matches.
It still works.
It still works.
Okay, good.
I, I don't know that we've ever had anyone use a project they've completed as a match, but I think we're silent on that component, we just say a recommended twenty-five percent match.
So are you, are, are you looking for decision from us?
Direction, on what we need to, what you would like to consider funding so that we can bring, build that into the plan for you to take action on the plan.
Okay.
Just direction today.
Okay.
If you, if you would like me to, we could go one by one from the table too, and you can discuss the merits of the application and whether you need any additional information on that, if that's the board, if the board would like me to do that.
Sure.
Start with, right, um, City Collins. Again, the project was, they're doing improvements to their, um, the park with trail improvements, a food park, um, component, frisbee golf, dog park. Um, they also have a safety initiative where they have three structures they intend to place on foundation for the community to access or vet, um, those attending the parks be able to have a, a safe place to go in the event of a storm. Total project cost two hundred and twenty-three dollars, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. They did request a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two fifty. I did verify that that is the requested amount with matching funds at twenty-five percent. May I continue?
Sure.
City of Zering, um, as you just heard, improvements, um, primarily concrete and um, related structure or shelter improvements. The application stayed at eighty-five thousand dollars. They're requesting sixty-three thousand, seven fifty from Story County for a twenty-five percent match. Next, you heard from the city of Slater, um, as part of a several-phase project to do a trailside sports complex and trailhead for accessing the heart of Iowa Nature Trail. And this is phase two. Phase two costs are five hundred and forty-three thousand, they are requesting a hundred and sixty-eight thousand from Story County and their match is sixty-eight percent.
What did they, uh, fund phase one, what was phase one?
Yeah, the application.
They didn't ask for funding from us, did they?
No. This is the first year we're
Yeah, phase two would start fiscal year twenty-five. So they're already working on phase one.
I think he said they raised the funds. A lot of the funds.
And I believe it could be part of phase one was the acquisition of the land too. And the engineering and construction.
Okay, and they did that a lot of city funds probably then.
Or private. What I'm remembering, that city funds, and then they did a lot of private fundraising because you talked about the support from the community.
City of Story City is a project along the, the restroom project for North Park, putting in restrooms in North Park. Total project cost three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. They are requesting two hundred and sixty-five thousand from Story County for a twenty-five percent, and they are proposing a twenty-five percent match. And then the last app, did you have a question, Linda?
The city itself wasn't putting in any money though, they were using some other
There is, there is a foundation, but, um, I, I think Mark Jackson did indicate if needed, the city has capacity to fund their match if the board would say it has to be fully funded by city dollars. They do have a private foundation they can pull through.
Yes, I'd like to see the city put something into that because the other cities are.
That's my, just my thought. I hear, I hear you, but if it's not in, if it's not a requirement today. Yeah.
The last is City of Nevada, um, trail connection from the new flyover um, on into the Nevada park system. Total project cost of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, sixty-four dollars, and they are asking a hundred thousand dollars. And with the match, they're at fifty-eight percent. As Lisa said, total, total requests are six hundred, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. It's getting lunchtime. So you do have the capacity for next fiscal year to, to award for all of them if you did desire. I will note, um, for the record, there have been some concerns voiced by, um, our animal control director regarding the dog park component with City of Collins. And just some, since Story County Animal Control does, um, enforcement and has responsibilities within the city limits, um, I think those are valid concerns that she has voiced. I don't remember what the, I think that amount was like ten thousand dollars for construction of the dog park.
So what specifically was the concern?
If there were, if they had additional calls related to dog fights, bites that occurred with the dog park, there are those types of instances that occur within dog parks. And given the lack of local enforcement sensitives through the animal control department to do, that would be called in those.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Leanne, I think Anna said that the city of Collins might have one of the higher call rates for the communities that they serve already without the dog park. We can get more information from Anna if you want.
So how would we, how do we? At, at this moment?
You could simply, I, what, how do you go forward, is that what you're asking? You could remove that element of awarding. Um, they could construct it, of course, but you would not
Be funding it.
Be funding that part. And we were clear, clearly defined.
Turn around and say, well, we use the city, our city money for that. Because we just did that on another one.
Right.
That isn't. There are other communities that have dog parks, I know Ames has one.
Ames has their own animal control.
I know they do, and their dog park is right down the street.
And I think you have to have a, you have to go into City Hall and get like a permit or something to be able to to use it. I mean, I, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, just the, the fact that there are concerns from animal control about that specific part of the project, I would not have any concerns about removing it from the approval list.
My question, Leanne, or Andrea, or both of you, is I know our policy is they need to have a minimum twenty-five percent match. If we remove something, does that does that change their match or can we say we're only gonna award this amount, but we want you to keep the current listing of matching funds, which could potentially raise that. Like if we said, I'm just throwing out there, let's say for Collins, we're gonna reduce you by ten thousand or twenty thousand dollars. But we want you, that match to stay at the fifty-five, seven fifty, which would increase their percentage higher, you get what I'm saying there? It could, would increase their percentage to like thirty percent or thirty-five instead of twenty-five percent. Can you do that even though our policy's, granted, just as the minimum of twenty-five percent?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, if, by all means, if the communities are gonna put more into projects, there's nothing in our policy that precludes that.
No, but if we're saying we don't want to fund all of what you're requesting, we're gonna reduce that, you can fund everything else, but we're gonna take out, for example, the dog por, park. And I'm just using Collins because that's what we're discussing right now. If you take that out, is their match still twenty-five percent? I mean, it reduces their overall total. Or do you, can you say, no, we want you to stay at that fifty-five thousand, your match now becomes thirty percent?
I think that's a conversation we'd have to have with the community, see if, if the dog park, if the county is not willing to contribute towards that construction, is that project still a go or not? Um, and then, and if it was a hundred percent county funded, if they had any costs into that, the city too. Did you have something?
So either way, if we would say, hey, I, I understand the total project, you're requesting a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, we're gonna give you, let's say, a hundred and forty thousand, throwing out a number. Then you would go back, discuss with them, they would, they could figure out a way to stay at that still twenty-five percent and figure out what projects based on how they
Projects within what they already applied for.
Okay, that's what I'm, all right, thank you.
And it is a recommended match too, so there is some leeway?
Yeah, no, I, I, I get that.
Dog park was seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand.
They itemized it, yeah, request.
Yeah, I couldn't remember how much it was and I just wrote it down this morning.
Seventeen.
I do like, uh, applications that we're talking about safety issues or ADA compliance. Want accessibility to all.
That was one of the things about the Story City project.
Right, Zering and, yeah, really talked about accessibility of their, of their restrooms. Well, if we took out the seventeen thousand for the dog park, that would bring
Hundred and fifty thousand, two fifty for our share.
Right, hundred and fifty thousand, two fifty. During, I would just want clarification if it's eighty-five or eighty. I, I have a feeling he just misspoke today, but I would want, I want, would want confirmation from, from them on that.
Story Cities is a good proposal, but it is the highest amount that's being asked of us and they did say they had some city funds. And I know it's not a requirement that they do city funds. But it's still up to us how much we want to fund. But it's still up to us how much we want to fund. I would be, I think we could lower our amount there a little bit. It is by far the highest. It's $100,000 more than whether Collins or Slater asked for with their projects.
Would you want staff to follow up with Mr. Jackson and see the percentage that will be city funds versus foundation funds?
Yeah, what the city could add into that. I think we're all for taking the dog park out of Collins, out of our share. If they choose to do something else and use their match money for it, I don't think there's anything we can do about that.
Right, but we can say.
We can make it clear that we're not funding it.
Right. Have concerns with anything else?
Those are the two.
Yeah, those are. That give you the direction you need, Leanne and Andrea?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, any upcoming agenda items? No, do not. All right, now's the time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take action on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comment, if you're in the public meeting room, please come forward. Or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand on Zoom and we'll call on you. And I am not seeing anyone raise their hand or come up, so we'll close public. Comment number two, we'll move on to liaison assignments committee meeting, updates and announcements. Supervisor Merkin, you want to start us out?
I can. Um, just a second.
I have an AAMPO meeting at 6 o'clock today and have a League of Women Voters meeting at 7:00. So I've got a couple of meetings this evening, tomorrow. Working on some issues with WMA meetings coming up and also Emergency Management Commission. Thursday, it looks like we have an environmental health. Okay, staff recognition Friday, ADC board meeting, also a meeting in the afternoon in Huxley regarding a drainage district issue next Monday. I don't see anything. That's what I got.
Hey, I have a personal appointment this afternoon. And then tonight I have a League of Women Voters meeting. Tomorrow morning at 7:00, I have Nevada Economic Development Commission meeting, Housing Action Plan meeting, and then a luncheon at ISU to talk with some students at the CAT Center. Thursday, environmental health, although I might be taking my dad to a doctor's appointment. So we'll have to see if I can be here for that. And then a Women of NACO meeting in the afternoon. Community and Family Resources meeting Thursday night. Friday, I have Central Iowa Juvenile Detention in the morning. And Monday, I have a Story County Safety Action Plan Workshop on my calendar on Monday morning.
I have that on my calendar.
That is.
At 8:30.
We got information from Darren on that a while back.
I have that too.
And somebody else.
I thought it was a different meeting. That's it on Monday.
Hey, I'm here this afternoon. I will leave a little early to run home and let the dog out. And then there is the Mental Health Expo that's going on this evening. I remind folks about that's taking place at the Ames City Hall. I will actually be at a different mental health discussion group at the Alumni Center this evening at 6 o'clock. Tomorrow morning, I have a workforce meeting. And then in the afternoon, I have a meeting with the Director of MICA. Thursday, my HERDA and my CICS meetings were both canceled, so I know. So I will be here, environmental health. And then I have a Community of Excellence Advisory Committee meeting at Mary Greeley. Friday, courthouse security meeting in the morning. Saturday is the 60 Forward ribbon cutting. So anyone who wants to come down. And then I also have the Story County Action Plan Workshop on my calendar for Monday. And that's it for now, but certainly it's early enough in the day. Things can certainly change as we go on. And if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Head and eye, we are adjourned.